...trees, makes a heck of a lot of pollution, and comes out carbon negative. So nobody else except stupid Hawaii is doing it. And when I say stupid Hawaii, I realize this is a hearing for the Department of Health. That's totally new to me, that the Department of Health would even take a step in the right direction for human health. I've been an activist since 1970, and I'm always on the opposite side of the Hawaii State Department of Health. Always. We have been deusing poisonous toxins on our fields, on our plantation fields, for years after they were outlawed in every other state in the country. It's true. Okay, back to my one page here. Okay, so nobody else, nobody else is doing this kind of thing. This is, as somebody said dinosaur, I like to say that thirty thousand years ago, this was cutting-edge technology. But you know what? This is 2018. Let's try solar. Let's try wind. Now, there's a thought actually has the possibility of wave motion energy. Yes? It's not efficient in lane, and it's not a surf squad. And you know, you can do wave energy harvesting at the same time as fishing. Okay. Burden salt-encrusted wood skews dioxins into the air. You know where I learned that from? Uh, who knew a rock, an expert from the mainland, from one of their hearings way back when? And that's what he told us. And they all went, "What?" Because that was kind of against their project, but he said, "Well, you know, if you harvest trees that are growing within a quarter mile of the ocean, they're encrusted with NACL, and guess what? When you burn that, you get dioxin." Do you want dioxins in the air? Do you know that the air quality study that was done for this project was done at the airport? The airport was not at Papua Kaua Point, as far as I know. Did nobody did the air quality study at the base of Waianaeui Avenue? These are all facts that I guess I've known for eleven years, but I didn't hear them today yet. And one other thing. Okay, those of us who live in Tepukoeo, or Papua Kaua, or close by, we're the most affected. But you know what? If you ever plan to drive to Honaka, go now. Because you're not one of them. Go on and go. When you're competing with, what is it? Five lumber trucks an hour?
One way, six.
Oversized.
And that road is dangerous now, but when you have a truck that can't make it around the corner with you there, you think it's the truck that's gonna fall, do you think? I don't think so. I mean, we're not even gonna have a record of the traffic accidents that are gonna happen at this coaster. And by the way, someone said, "Well, but what else are we gonna do with the trees?" Well, we should have not planted them in the first place. I was also a member of Friends of Honolulu, two thousand strong. Two thousand people who opposed this, and we actually stopped, and who would have been even more stupid, the county and the state wanted to plant five thousand acres each more of these crappy trees. And these are among the worst trees in the world. They only plant them in Australia, in land that can't support anything. Well, anyway, I take my time. Thank you.
Good morning, Louise, Pablo, Viner, Spineless, and Corbin Young.
Hello, me Kato. My name is Kula Nunez. I am a marine culture practitioner, I have three young children, and I'm a resident of Kuaupu Lake here. I live less than a half mile from Honaka. Today, I would like to directly address Hua'ona's EIC permit application, in which they were asked about special considerations. And I quote, "Would the injection activity pursuant to this proposed permit application affect any public trust or native Hawaiian resources or the exercise of traditional cultural practices in the vicinity?" To which Hua'ona answered, "No." The Hawaii Supreme Court has described the public trust doctrine as the right of the people to have the waters protected for their use, which demands adequate provision for traditional and customary Hawaiian, wildlife, maintenance of ecological balance, and the preservation and enhancement of the water. This doctrine applies to all water resources without exception or distinction. And what of intergenerational equity? What of our children's rights to a helpful future? To the availability of clean water decades from now? Hawaii Supreme Court defines the public trust as the duty and authority to maintain and the purity and flow of our waters for the future generations. The concept that it is our responsibility to exhaustively scrutinize any entity that would have such incredible impact as Hua'ona on our waters, on our environment, and the quality of those resources well into the future, our children's futures, their futures after them. The traditional cultural practices referred to in the EIC application would include customary and constitutionally protected gathering rights. If the Ika has a very active and thriving fishing community, which would have been very easy to determine if Hua'ona had done due diligence, extensive public access shows point to its active engagement with the area's natural and cultural resources. In terms of vicinity, may I open an actively access and practice your gathering rates at Nalai of Ka'odidi, Ka'ena, Ka'atua, Kalaleko, Lohea, Ka'aviiki, Alia, and Makana'lo? Hua'ona is situated in Makana'lo. Atop the story cliffs of Kui Kui Lomani, once the location of Ho'makau, the sacred damper of the god Kanu. The marine waters that will receive thermally and chemically contaminated water from Hua'ona's operations at the rate of fifteen thousand gallons a minute are called Ke'kai, Hanu Kono'au Kalayo of Kanalo. The winds into which they will emit three hundred tons of greenhouse gases a year are the Kipia, the Ulu'au'ui, and the Ku'ala. The twenty-one-point-six billion gallons of water they will draw date from now for our Kavaya Kanu. Heva'ku, heva'ni, puna, heva'yeinu, heva'ye mana, heva'ye'or. Makana'lo Bay is also a known lair, a leaving-off place to which, at the end of our days, our spirit will come to be brought into the next realm. To assert that there are no need for Hawaiian resources that would be affected by your operations is a kind of blatant disregard indicative of Hua'ona's permitting practices thus far. This body cannot allow economic pursuit to render native Hawaiian and cultural practices and resources invisible. Nor can it allow economic pursuit to seek the protection of our natural resources and the public trust doctrine that is a shrine in the fake constitution. Hua'ona cannot be allowed to flout the clean water act, and to claim their operations will not adversely impact our waters is absurd. It is grossly negligent. Hua'ona must be required to apply for an NPDES permit and should be required to reapply for the EIC permit, as the current application is woefully inaccurate. I assert the need for an environmental review for this project before we can even address this body with a full understanding of how we, our children, our waters, our environment, would be adversely impacted by this project. Without this kind of review, I assert that my constitutionally protected rights to due process are being violated. E'ola, Kaua.
Okay, I excuse this. We came up sort of out of words, but first, the new wizard Susan Rose here could be followed by Pablo.
We got three.
This speaker, Susan Rose here, could be followed by Pablo, Viner, and Corbin Young.
And what he said was that I was out of order.
No, actually, you won. You got skipped.
Yeah. However, I was within perfect order. I prayed for everything to be in perfect order, so yeah, Corbin, sure. Then I followed her. You know, this is the king's land that we're talking about. King William, Bruno Lilo. The kings, the royals, received the best land, the land that was most sacred during the Great Mahaly, and they received it in a lodeo royal land title. And a lodeo is not black law, library interpretation. A lodeo comes from the fact that the king, when he conquered all the islands, he was the sovereign. All the land belonged to him. When Telemann III was in office, and I can think of him as the greatest, and he lived greater than his dad. He gave the land back to the people in a lodeo title. In, he gave his sovereign to them. In the Book of the Mahaly, which was from nineteen thirty-eight to nineteen forty-eight, eighteen, eighteen forty, I know, it's the two thousands now. In the Great Mahaly book, there are distinguishments of title. The royal, the royal is different than just the royal. When it has royal meaning, that means a lodeo. There are different classifications. The gap is perpetuating through their families forever. Hua'ona and the state of Hawaii really have no business being there, because this is kingdom land. And it's something that we don't wanna talk about, and we don't wanna listen to, but it is an actual fact, and we're going to have to come into some kind of movement in that direction, because it is a fact, it's not going away. I'm a protected person, everybody in this room is probably a protected person. All I've heard from the outside is, "Well, that's a sovereign movement." It's not. It's an actual fact. In nineteen eighty-eight, President Reagan asked the Department of Justice to investigate a way that he could expand material to oral needs. They came back with a report, and they studied all of the states that had boundaries with the Atlantic Ocean and the Pacific Ocean. And when it came to Hawaii, the memorandum backed to President Reagan was they could find no avenue by which the United States obtained the Hawaii deal. Since then, there has been more and more and more evidence in towards the Larson case in nineteen ninety-nine. Two thousand and six, in China versus, in Philippines versus China, when China said, "Well, we don't have to participate, the United States doesn't have to participate." And they said, "No, you do. The United States is not part of Hawaii," because it's not. And we need to come to grips with that. These lands, including Papua Kaua, including Papua Kaua, Papua Kaua and Papua Kaua, why these are Maui, one, per family, per Ohana, one, and inwards all the way up, that that is their land, one hundred percent. Hawaiians are winning their land back. That does not mean that they're gonna tell everybody, "Go away." You have to look that we were a constitutional monarch with laws. This thing that's going around about general legal protection, you don't understand, it means that the Department of Health, and the State of Hawaii, and the Council, and the planning committee, and anybody that has anything to do with what goes on in our lands, on our lands, and, sorry to the real estate people, but we can't sell them either. There's fraud, and we all know it. I said, "You will." So I want you to think with your hearts, not with your wallet. This is our water. This is the air we breathe. This is our land, this is our opus. This is the land that Kanaka Maori used to be able to go and have their culture. It is their land. It is their family land, it is royal land. If you can't get a grip on what that means, I would like you to what else King Bruno Lilo owned, and his family and heirs own till today. So be careful what you do, and be careful what you ask for, because Kapoko was his also. I want everybody that's with the government cease and desist immediately. Don't turn your law. And you know, foreign corporations, no corporations can ever inherit any, they cannot, by law, inherit any land that came from the kingdom.
Okay, Kato, Viner, Corbin Young. And Shannon Nelson.
My name is Pablo, like you know, Viner. I'm a resident of Honaka, and I'm also a poet, so I like to express things in verse and verse. Ni bichoki, water is life. Cries in the mighty icy snow, that the kota stands strong to keep oil and ground, to end assaults on the first medicine. Water is healing. Smoke from tobacco entwined with whistling, a datsama cure from the Amazon Basin sets intentions to mold molecules of water. Water is alive. Su, the ancient Japanese character for water embodies all things fluid, flowing, formless, constantly adapting. Your blood is sweet. That tree is sweet. Your glee is sweet. Water is fortune. Roses of Carlos lake thirst from Lucent rivers, all I do, boki, glassy flowing by. There is a reason that two vies make a right, a human right to wealth afforded to all, which is why the violent violation of this right to clean vie violates not just laws of the land, but the demoral doing that we all serve to the mother that we all share. The hubris to believe that fallible technology will hand us spotless records is beyond belief, and can be countered by many moments of history. Algae blooms, from annika advances, toxicity that murders manatees. BP oil spills into estuaries, pressure from wells leads to beached whales. Injecting hazardous chemicals into wells will no doubt spell trouble for Pepe Eko's wells. Food for family, homes for Hua'una, the kingdom is teary. There is no vi, when you violate vi, when you commodify at expense a vi, when you modify molecules of vi, when chemical cocktails never test it. Vi, I will only arrive when minds have changed to respect vi, as you would your own mother, to treat it as a lie. Vi is life. Thank you.
Okay, folks, we have forty-four more speakers in eighty-nine more minutes, so please keep it to two minutes if you can all agree.
We don't mind staying longer.
Uh, yes, we can stay in the building.
My name is Corbin. I don't think that power plant is going to be a good idea, because there is many chemicals that damage the ocean, and that is not only including the superheated water, that kills marine life, but that is just the sea. The land is just a bag. When we burn the trees, it releases carbon dioxide that throws the carbon cycle off balance. And there are other victims, we even use dead, like solar power and wind power, and that's the best answer. I think we all want a healthy planet.
The next three speakers are Shannon Nelson, Liam O'Malley, and Andrew Gonzalez.
Okay, my name is Shannon Nelson. Hi. Thank you for providing the space, you know. And I would also say that I think maybe we're gonna need to do this again. I don't think that this is done. We run out of time. We run out of time, and then we need to have another meeting, because this is part of the problem. And most of us are not getting paid to be here today to stand up for our environment. We are doing this of our own free will. And I saw a gentleman earlier with a Veterans for Peace shirt on, and this is not part of my recorded testimony, this is part of my oral testimony, because I just saw this. And I think that it's really important to speak about the duality in situations where we get environmentalists pitted against workers, because I firmly believe that we can be both for the workers and for the environment. And I hope that the workers here, we agree that it's for the environment, and for their families, and for their jobs. So whenever this conversation is coming in, and says, "No, it's one way or the other, that's what we all need to be questioning, what are we doing here?" So my written testimony is speaking as the vice chair of Democratic Party, but we've already had some really great voices speak to that, thank you Jeff and Maya, and I cannot speak for all fifteen thousand-plus members, because some of these workers that are for this grant are actually party members of the Democratic Party, so I know that we are not united, and I believe that this is a bad thing for the future of Kua'ona. At the same time, the entire state is moving in the direction, whether it's a state or not, okay, that's a whole other discussion we'll have on time for today, but in July of this year, Hawaii banned oxybenzone, and oxy, twenty, I can't even pronounce it correctly, right? But these two things that have been proven, that are in such context, are hazardous to the reef. So we are airing on the side of caution now. So even if we're not a hundred percent sure about what it is that's gonna be going into our environment, and how it's going to be affecting things, right now, the movement of people that are living here presently is that we need to protect our environment for future generations, and that is what we need to do. We don't have a choice at this point. The legislature has passed this ban, and if this were before the state ledge right now, they would be saying, "No," because there's too many questions. There's way too many questions, and we don't have time to wait. So now I looked at what Hua'ona is proposing by rescuing their own website, trying to get accurate information. And on their website, their number one thing is rate cares come first. Okay, so that's confusing to me, because when we look at what truly renewable energies such as solar, cost is less. So how can they say rate cares come first? Or does that mean that they will be compromising the rest of their so-called principles to meet their bottom line? And if that's what they're doing, well, then the next thing is jobs. And my understanding is that there's thirty long-term jobs. I see, I think I see more than thirty green shirts here today, so my question is, how many of you guys are just in it right now, during your construction phase, and how many people are gonna be guaranteed long-term jobs? What are the benefits that you will be getting, and what's your rate of pay? Because if we're building this up, and we're saying we need to preserve these thirty long-term jobs, well, are those engineers, are those people from here that are gonna be getting those thirty jobs? I don't know. There's more information, information on the website about that. And then again, we can't eat money when our Kai is full of dead fish, and our, we have acid rain, and the ground is dirty, right? I mean, what are we, what are we gonna eat? So what good is the money? Right? I don't know. Next, one hundred percent clean renewable energy. This company cannot possibly provide the amount of power it's claiming it can, at the cost, it can have significantly a negative impact on the environment. Burning something is never clean. It's an oxymoron, clean coal, it doesn't exist. You can't do it. It's not possible. I'm sorry. So that's a lie right there. The premise is a lie. So I hate to call people liars, but you are lying to yourself if you are saying that what you are doing is environmentally friendly. It is not. I'm sorry. So that all ties directly to their pride and shame of being a good neighbor. And I don't know what qualities you look for in a neighbor, but if that neighbor suddenly began driving huge trucks by our house multiple times a day, started burning a huge amount of wood, compromising your air quality, your peace and quiet, your road access, your ocean, your fish, your drinking water, and your food supply, would you consider it a good neighbor?
No.
I'm sorry, it's not a good neighbor. So to consider a purpose facility without an NPDES permit is both negligible and reprehensible. We count on the Department of Health to do the right thing for public health and safety. And once again, they are fanatics. Because of the impact this facility will have on our community, and in essence, the entire island, an EIS must also be required before even considered moving forward. There are many unanswered questions, and the answers do not look good for Hua'ona's bottom line. Our community absolutely demands forward thinking solutions that protect and provide for beef, health, and sustainability, protection, and preservation of our shared resources of land, air, and water. Land, air, and water. It is the law. We need to protect these resources for everyone. Thank you so much.
Liam O'Malley, Andrew Gonzalez, Joshua Nelson.
Hello. My name is Liam O'Malley. I'm a foreigner raised in Mahi'ali, Kani'au'au'au. I've moved through P'au'we'au two years before I started farming. I've lived without electricity and running water for the past two years, and I go this far by myself, my parents money. I have solar energy. And I'm a Hawaiian national, I have my Hawaiian Kingdom ID, and I'm also a poet, and I wrote this poem up there by myself, being a hermit, praying for the revolution. You know, and we're all family here. You know, I see two opposite sides, but me and Uncle Walter, we're gonna start an olive farm in P'au'we'au, right next to my little ancient burial home. I have five acres, and many people out there wanna come grow olive weed. Promise, from R'au'au'au'au'au. True story. A lot of grass that you can dig. I saw a beautiful brother sleeping in the gutters, and I wondered, "What can I do to help?" And so I fought the war on war. I pulled out the roots, and I fed the poor. Huli mok'aflih hau'e consciousness and restore 'Oha'aina consciousness. Pull the weeds so the native can grow. Decolonize and re-kolo-nize. Because if hau'aua, the taro lives, the Hawaiian people live. Kau'au kau'au 'Aina. Taro planted on the land. The sacred Hawaiian race of people like the Tu'apit'ee'danana, a pirate inherent, go from. Yeah, it's a joke. Bring the diaspora back home, all those Hawaiians who couldn't afford to pay rent. We have millions, thousands of acres and genuine farmers buying up all the land, doing nothing with it, building their mansions. I just came from court yesterday for a turn on, developers proposal to self-divide and conquer sign, 'cause he doesn't notice my Kingdom ID. I said, "Not guilty." I could have been in jail today, but I'm not, because I'm right. Bring the diaspora back home, every native family that couldn't afford to pay rent. Bring them back, put them back on the land. Aina needs tamaka. Where is Aina? There's no tamaka. Who's gonna grow the food? It's just empty land. Bring the diaspora back home and escape from Sanford Gold's pineapple maze of lies and half-truths. And non-existent trees don't negate the fact you deal in stolen property. And your war machine is running on the blood of Indians. And your Tower of Babinon is built atop the bones of Africans. And your machines will all turn to rust. Your bones will turn to dust. In the end, my dear, it'll just be us. Lady Liberty, peace, love, and... Lady Liberty, peace, love, and justice. Alohaaina'ana, forever alohaaina. Ua'mau ke'ao ka'aina i'opono. The breadth of the land is the health of the people. And when you alohaaina, the aina'ana is you. So, huli kouli mai lalo, ola, i'au la kauaui a'ali.
Andrew Gonzalez, Joshua Mason, and Wendell Calcay. Hello.
Aloha. Sorry, I've been luring for the last hours, trying to explain to children why they can't be out there playing. And while they're just sitting here, and it's like, shh, shh, it's terrible, it's here, they listen, they probably are understanding something. Hopefully, I'm gonna make a really brief statement, although there's a lot of people that still need to talk. I just wanted to point out, hopefully after all these testimonies and hearings and PhDs and everything, we all understand that there's only one ocean, all of ours. The oceans are in fact, we're overfishing, shark fin, marine debris, and here we are with one more thing. The fact that we've been for hours putting testimonies, debating whether it's okay or not okay, should let us know already in our hearts that it's not okay. If it were clear, if it were clean, then we wouldn't have spent the last hours here putting out points of view. So, for the ones that have their doubts, really search in your heart. I want to point out one more thing. I think I'm a country born and raised in which big corporations told us that we'd do a lot of rankings, and they did, a lot of rankings. Sixty years later, they still own us. We owe everything to them in our land. Yeah, super polluted. Beautiful, pristine things, gone. Think about those children. Think about your children. And if you don't have kids, that's dramatic. Think about the kids that are staying behind. Because the mess that we're making, it's not payable. The ocean won't, we don't have one, and we're gambling with so much, and when it's gone, it's gone. It created itself a whole ecosystem that allows us to survive here, right now. If it wasn't because of millions of years ago, everything worked as it should, we wouldn't even be having this discussion with our political leader tonight. So, for everybody that's putting out a fight, thank you very much, for the ones that have doubts, really think for the future, not just right now. Money comes and goes. Jobs come and go. But this aina is gonna stay here with everything we leave on it. So is that ocean with everything we give behind, including the kids. In the words of Captain Watson, founder of Sea Shepherd, "The things that we do stain three places." They stain our land, and they return to the soil. They go to the air, which is what we breathe. And they go back to the ocean, which is the water that created all of us and creates everything else. Once the ocean dies, we all die with it. Aloha.
Joshua Mason. After that, it will be Wendell, and then it will be Ryan Christopher.
Aloha. My name is Joshua Mason. I'm a former resident, but I was raised in Kilauea for the last thirty years. Grew up surfing, on the, you know, I developed a close life. And I know that there's been so many beautiful, powerful testimonies today, speaking both artistically as well as factually and many times devotionally about a lot of the contentious issues of this project. I've been a participant in the solar issue for the last eight years, but I'm not here to advocate for the solar industry today. I'm here to advocate for our community. And as a member of that community, hopefully provide some kind of perspective that's unique to my experience and my understanding of what's been going on in this space as it relates to power-related projects, both presently as well as in the near past. So, I'm gonna focus a lot on the environmental, ecological, community-related impacts. Those are very, very real and very relevant, and a big part of focus today. But I just wanna bring out the nature of this project and the opportunity costs that it presents. When we pursue a project like this to utility, we're committing to, you know, a twenty or thirty-year long-term contract. And because that contract is basically committed to say, hey, we're, as rate payers, we as a community, we are agreeing to do this, right? Helco is just an entity through which we speak, and we have to recognize that. The same is supposed to be with our voices, you know, in voting for our legislation, right? We are the rate payers of Helco. We're the ones that dictate how much money to get. And at the end of the day, we oftentimes take whatever it is they give us rather than turn around and demand more of them. A lot of that has been shifted in the last two years in a powerful way that has resulted in a lot of positive changes. But I will tell you, as somebody in the solar industry, there's been a lot of things that happened in solar as well as other renewable energy industries that are not representative of the community. They're representative of greed and other factors involved. And I'm not suggesting that is the case here. I just wanna bring up one quick issue on this that I have assessed myself, and it is the matter of us as rate payers. You know, we're comparing this not just as an absolute project, but as something as an alternative to something else we might be able to do right now or in the near future that would replace these firm power capacity of, you know, about twenty-one megawatts of capacity, as well as the energy that we're committing to buy from this power source for the long term. Ten years ago, there were not many alternatives. Fast forward to now, there's a whole slew of alternatives that we're seeing come across the globe, in Australia, as well as other island communities like Puerto Rico, as well as other islands here in Hawaii. And to give you some basic numbers on this project, from Helco's own analysis of this done in 2017, they expected the localized costs of buying the energy from this plant is gonna be around twenty-one, twenty-eight cents per kilowatt hour. The majority of that is what's called capacity payments, which is they're basically buying for the power availability so that they can disperse that power on demand from Helco. That is the biggest portion of that cost. And then you have the actual energy purchase cost. Over time, that cost goes up dramatically, because Helco's expecting to buy less power over time and have to still remain buying that significant amount of capacity from the plant. So, my question really comes down to, is this really the appropriate alternative amongst other alternatives that we see right now in Kauai? They just executed and have built solar plus storage projects that are around eleven, twelve cents a kilowatt hour with firm capacity. And yes, it's not a direct comparison to a project like this. But my question really comes down to, in the next couple of years, if we can develop a project that was at fifteen cents and didn't have all of this environmental, ecological, community baggage attached to it, is it worth waiting, or is it worth evaluating those other options? Even if everything that is environmentally being stated today is correct on who-who-who's behalf, are we really, as rate payers, doing ourselves the appropriate interest by committing to a project like this for the next twenty to thirty years as opposed to what may else be available now? That wasn't available in this project, just first started to be available. So, thank you very much.
Ryan Christopher, Ricky Tavosa, Nolan Ferrera, or Roland Schröder.
One time. Oh, sorry, wrong crowd. Sorry. Can I get applause for this young man right here? When we started, when we started this, you know, for lack of beer, what happened? Okay, I'll tell you something. We all got our own choices of, you know, whatever section we support or don't support. My name is Wendell, Kailua'i'a. Birthday, US Navy, from nineteen sixty-six to sixty-four. I have a father in Hawaiian homes, Paniava. Twenty-eight years, took it at night myself. Thirty-eight years, I'm still there. I have three college degrees and a minor economics. I signed off at age fifty-three at Community College, where my kids all grew up and left the house. Graduated from this campus at fifty-eight years old. The class of two thousand, the oldest of a couple of hundred. They even made me guest speaker for five minutes. And I tell you what, I was a producer, like these guys. I did a lot of interviews. I did editing programs, filming for Community Television, accompanied the entire island. Fifteen years. The protests up in Naleo, I filmed that. The protest in Puna, I filmed a couple of years of that. I filmed the protests of the entire island, so I've been through all of it, filming it. The key thing, I worked for Puna Sugar. I was a field supervisor of Puna Sugar, cultivation department. We went through a safety watch, bioenergy is going through. I'll tell you what happened. We did, our sugarcane wastewater was flushed down on big pipes, all the way down to the back of the Puna plantation. We used that mud to make more land. And our cane waste, they call that book gas, we gave it to the farmers so they could use it in their fields. The dry mud, they call it mud press, we gave that to the farmers. The sugarcane waste went to our electric power plant. Puna Sugar provided jobs for eight hundred employees. That increased the vocational training program at the Hawaii Community College. Right now, the kids going to Hawaii Community College get zero return when they graduate. This project will give them an opportunity. I'm gonna get more and heavier enrollment. The University of Hawaii can develop a stronger program in ag, in forestry with this project. And I tell you what, all you demonstrators, whether you're for or against, here's what coming. Better get ready. On this side of the island, we got a deep saltwater plant is coming to this side of the island. We got a cold water, like they have in Kona. They can put one up in Puna. It's coming to the side of the island. I met and seen a lot of the employees, and I know them, with, especially Mr. Lee over there. And I, I don't know all the employees, especially the pipe fitters. The pipe fitters, they had so many looking for pipe fitters. They couldn't, even the union couldn't even find enough pipe fitters in the state of Hawaii. A lot of these pipe fitters came from all over the United States, because we never had a project like this. I meet with them every Friday. They get paid every Friday. Two vans of pipe fitters. They're really grateful for their jobs. Bo'ia'au are coming. Similar to our eight hundred employees at Puna Sugar, we lost our jobs. And the last thing, yes, I support this project. I support Hawaii Island, and I support all of you who spoke today. Aloha.
Hello. My name is Ryan Christopher. I'm here on behalf of my six-year-old daughter Savannah. She has school today. I came down from Kona Kaha today with an open mind. As you see, I don't have any notes. I don't have a prepared speech. I learned about this plant about a week ago, and started doing a little bit of research, and I'm gonna go down and listen to everybody that talks and form my own opinion. I think that's an important thing that doesn't seem to happen that much anymore. And the thing that really struck me today in listening to the presentation that was put on was that these environmental studies are not required, and it's surprising and disappointing. But if Hau'oloa would do those, I know they're not required to, but if they would elect to do them, I think they would win over a lot of people, people like me and many others. If the reports came back saying that it would not negatively impact the environment, you would have the support of so many more people. But seeing as how you haven't done that or won't do that, it seems to tip, tip your hand to me. I remain open to the fact that maybe you would do that, and then you would gain my support, but until then, I don't support the project. Thank you.
Ricky Tavosa, Roland Ferrera, Elizabeth Hansen.
Hello, everybody. I'm Ricky Tavosa. I work for Hau'oloa. I'm in a small, the project through completion. The NPDES and the UIC permits are among many permits of regulatory process that requires who will be competing with Google and a new project. The project will be put for community to create jobs for local residents such as myself. Please do not allow misinformation to the end of your project. Thank you.
Excuse me, I'd like to say hi to those few people who didn't ask to speak. Okay, the next speaker is Shirley Harrow, followed by Lelena Lupe, followed by Mark Coughlin.
Okay, do you want to speak? Yeah, okay, okay. Okay, go ahead.
Everybody, my name is Ryan Harrow. Yes, I am an employee of Hau'oloa. I've been underground at the site for just around seven years now. My family, born and raised in Hau'oloa. I mean, I was born a steward of this island. And, I mean, we are connected, but bottom line. And everyone in the community here, with the exception of a few, are from the island. We are stewards. I mean, I know I can compete with some of these guys, and they're understanding, but you know what? Me being there, I've gained a lot of understanding. I mean, a lot of you, do you guys understand how cesspools work? You guys are talking about saluting groundwater. Do you guys understand how cesspools and cesspool tanks work? I mean, they directly affect the fresh water over. We, another, are going to know that, the groundwater. So, you know, with that being said, I mean, do you guys research? Use your guys' own minds. Don't follow what other people say. Just follow me. Again, I was born and raised from this island, and so have a lot of employees here. We are stewards, because we're from here. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Elizabeth Hansen, and I'm a resident in Alama. And I'm very concerned about what's happening as other people are here. And what I'd like to just stress is only two things. Everybody's really commented on a lot of important issues, but I just wanna stress that given the close proximity to our very unstable cliffs, it's just shocking to me that they're gonna pour millions of gallons of water a day through this aquifer. It doesn't make sense. It's very scary. It's amazing that since there's so many earthquakes that we have had in the last couple of months, they're only little baby earthquakes that we have up here, but they're still earthquake can. And we gotta figure out how that's gonna impact our, our cliffs. So, I'm really concerned, and I wanna please stress that we need to have a viral impact study before this project continues. And I also wanna talk about, even though it's not really part of the Board of Health, the whole impact of what's gonna happen when these huge trucks are crossing our dilapidated bridges, koli koli and hakalo bridges, every day, time to time again. So, please consider, reconsider this project.
Shirley Harrow, Shirley Harrows, Lelena Lupe, and Mark Coughlin. Shirley Harrow, Shirley Harrows, Lelena Dupe, and Mark Hoplin.
Hello. My name is Shirley Harrows. Hello, my name is Shirley Harrow. I too am a veteran. And, um, I love this place and I love the people, I love the environment. And mostly, I love that we're having this discussion, although for me, it's a formidable conclusion that this is not a good decision. I think that the chemicals that were mentioned at the beginning of the day, all of them have prohibitions against entering sewers and the water. And I don't know how this could not happen if we're gonna be injecting it into the, into the earth, into the aina. And, um, these chemicals will be, um, going into our aquifer, threatening our drinking water. If there's lots of water being taken from the aquifer, then the implication is that we could easily have land collapse. The whole idea of self-monitoring, um, there's already been a spill that was sort of being covered over, but the board let us know that it was going on. Um, there are so many opportunities for damage. And, um, I equate this with a box starting in the house. And then, um, I think the removal, the cutting of trees will result in landslides. And anybody who drives from Makua to Kilauea already knows that they're concept of landslides. And now they're reinforcing, reinforcing the side of the mountains to keep that from happening. Um, I think it's obvious, um, that there's a sacrifice of our resources, quality of our life, our environment, um, to corporate greed. And it's fused with contempt for the aina and for the people. This is an obvious sacrifice of our resources and just for corporate greed. And I've been told to screen it with this project. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Akapo, I'm a resident of Kaila'kaua. I was a teacher at private school in Kaila. I first heard about this issue, um, it was on Saturday. My friends of mine called me up and said, please, so go surfing today. Don't go surfing with doctors, we have documentation of deliberate chemical waste being dumped into Makua'kaua today. Don't go. I need to go Saturday, cause I'm there, I'm on Monday. I ended up with, um, cramps, diarrhea, ongoing GI problems today. And I have a lot of clothing in Kilauea also served in that area. And I've heard of additional remarks. Um, I've conducted additional research since then. Um, what's being called a spill and also being referred to as fallout, um, we recently claimed was inadvertent by some.